Okay. Hey, we got it.
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody else, Shelley?
Um. I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, with no further comment, um, council member new.
I just want to move for approval of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Lauren seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by council member new and a second by council member Lauren. For approval of the consent calendar, Shelley, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Lauren.
Hi.
Council member new.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. All right, um, we have no presentations tonight, so we're gonna move on to a couple of public hearings. And the first public hearing is regarding the urgency ordinance for extending the moratorium on the grading permits, and I believe this will be the city manager Treppa once again.
Actually, I'm going to defer to Assistant City Attorney Joanna Jin. She's been instrumental in moving this one forward.
Okay, great, welcome Joanna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. This urgency ordinance would extend the existing moratorium on the issue of grading permits for six months. Last month, council had approved a forty-five day moratorium on the issuance of grading permits unless grading plans are approved by the city engineer and adequate security is posted. The purpose of the moratorium is to allow staff to develop a comprehensive grading ordinance, and the moratorium is set to expire on September seventeenth. Staff is currently in the process of developing the grading ordinance, and while state law authorizes council to extend the moratorium up to twenty-two months and fifteen days, staff recommends extending moratorium by six months, which will be more than sufficient to draft the grading ordinance, allow the city engineer and staff to review the grading ordinance, have first and second reading for the ordinance, uh, which will take two meetings, and allow the ordinance to take effect thirty days after adoption at second reading. This ordinance requires a forfeits vote by council for approval, and the staff recommendation is to adopt urgency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero three to extend the moratorium by six months, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any council questions or comments?
Uh, Mayor?
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I just wanted to make a comment, maybe Joanna, you can verify. I believe what we're doing here is, it's no different than what we've approved already on this temporary grading moratorium. We're not saying that nobody is gonna get any more grading permits for the next twenty-two months. It's just a matter of them having to meet certain criteria, which we approved previously when we put the moratorium on it, that if they meet those criteria, then they can still get a, a grading permit, cuz I'm correct?
That is correct, and also the moratorium would only be an extension for six months, and grading permits could still be issued if they do meet that criteria. Thank you.
Hmm, and I think, you know, we're gonna be getting into the time of year where people probably won't be doing a lot of grading during the winter anyway, so I think should be fine extending it out.
Okay, um, any other council comments?
No.
If not, um, we'll go to public comment, we'll open a public hearing at six fifty-four. Um, Shelley, do we have any public comment concerning the grading ordinance? You're on mute, Shelley.
I apologize. I have no raised hands. And I don't see anybody waving at me through their video.
Okay, and we had no written comment on the item?
No.
Okay, and with that, then we'll close the public hearing at six fifty-five. And we'll move on to if there's no further council questions or concerns, we'll entertain a motion on the item.
Mayor, I will make a motion.
Okay.
I, I move that the council adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh-three repealing and recasting Title Fifteen of the Winters Municipal Code and adopting the reference, uh, whoops, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Uh, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one amending the city of Winters' general plan for adopting, no, I'm still on the wrong one. Gotta go with one more. Uh, urgency ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh-three.
There you go.
Extending the moratorium on grading permits without a plan approval or security pending preparation of a more comprehensive gradient ordinance. Got it.
Okay.
Uh, new seconds.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Biase, and a second by council member new. Shelley, we will do a roll call vote, please.
Council member Anderson.
Hi.
Council member Lauren.
Hi.
Council member new.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thank you, Joanne, for the presentation. Okay, we're gonna move on to the, to the next resolution here. We're gonna consider adopting resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one um, regarding the general plan and adopting a housing element update. Okay, who's gonna start this one off?
That would be me, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McGuire, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, staff is recommending city council take the following actions: receive the staff report on the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine housing element update, conduct the public hearing, approve the notice of exemption, and adopt resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one adopting the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine housing element update. Uh, as background, the state require, California requires all lower local jurisdictions to plan to provide housing for every segment of the local population. Each jurisdiction has responsibility to institute policies and programs designed to encourage the provision of housing. To meet this affordable housing planning requirement, every jurisdiction rep, prepares a housing element section of its general plan. The housing element is just one of seven mandated general plan elements. The housing element is a comprehensive statement by the city of Winters of its current and future housing needs and proposed actions to, to facilitate the provision of housing to meet those needs. As additional background, uh, this housing element update did go before, uh, the Planning Commission at their August twenty-fourth meeting, and they recommended unanimously, uh, with one recusal, uh, that city council, uh, approved the adoption of this housing element, which I might add only requires three affirmative votes, votes as opposed to an urgency ordinance, which did require the four or five. So with that, I would like to turn it over to, uh, Beth Thompson to, of De Nova, our, our contract consultant for preparation of the housing element to walk city council through, uh, this housing element update. And then obviously, staff is happy to answer any questions council might have, but with that, uh, with your permission, Mayor, I'll turn it over to Beth.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be before you tonight. I'm Beth Thompson. I'm a principal of De Nova Planning Group. And, and Kathleen, would you mind, um, enabling screen sharing for me?
Uh, I just did. See if you can get it. Can you?
That still doesn't like me. Maybe just give it a moment.
Or I have your PowerPoint ready to go if you want me to slide for you.
Yeah, pop it on that.
Okay, let me share my screen. Uh, slideshow.
There we go. And you can just move on to the next slide. So as, um, Dan McGuire mentioned, the housing element is the city's plan for addressing the requirements of the state's housing law. And it, it addresses how the city will meet its fair share of regional housing needs as determined by the state, as well as a host of other requirements. So there, it is the most detailed component of the general plan in terms of the level of specificity identified by the state and the government code. It is one of the mandated elements of the general plan, and it's implemented, um, concurrently and along with other general plan elements that address land use, circulation, safety, climate adaptation, conservation, open space, and noise. So it's not a standalone element. It's part of the broader general plan. And it is required to be updated regularly. It's on an eight-year cycle, so it's updated separately and more frequently than the other general plan elements. And that's particularly due to the, um, unique and specific requirements for a housing element. Next slide. The housing element includes two, two primary components. The housing plan is the policy document that's really what the city will be implementing and enacting over the next eight years. It includes an introduction that describes the housing element. It describes community participation efforts that went into developing the housing element. And it presents the housing plan, which are the goals, policies, policies and objectives and implementation programs that the city will carry out over the life of the housing element. It also includes a lengthy background report, and this is a more data-driven component of the housing element that addresses the city's housing needs. It identifies governmental and non-governmental constraints to the production of housing. It provides an inventory of residential sites in the city. It also describes approved projects and program, or projects in of ADUs, accessory dwelling units that would also contribute to the, the city's housing stock. It addresses new requirements with this element affirmatively furthering fair housing. So it has a, an analysis related to the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement. And it also discusses the effectiveness of the fifth cycle, the twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one housing element, and meeting the city's housing needs. And it also addresses several other requirements as well. Next slide. The housing element was developed with a lot of public outreach, so being developed during COVID is definitely a unique time to be preparing a housing element, engaging the community, as you're well aware. So a virtual workshop and survey was initially conducted to get community feedback and engagement in the housing element. And the workshop and survey were hosted on the city's website, and they were available in both English and Spanish to encourage participation from a broader segment of the community. It was advertised on the city's website in the city manager's weekly report, and then it was also directly emailed to over sixty stakeholders that are involved either in, um, social services that are involved either in social services, housing production, real estate, or business, or other services to the city and county residents as well. And we did ask the, um, the stakeholders that we contacted to share the information about the housing element update with their clientele. And we provided, um, a flyer and a survey in both English and Spanish to, to the service providers, as well as language, sample language they could use, that they could post on their social media. We also provided outreach to the Hispanic Advisory Committee, um, Winters Healthcare, and the Yellow Food Bank Distribution distributed flyers as well, and Yellow Food Bank did distribute flyers, hard copies at their, um, weekly food distribution. So they were in direct contact with the community, asking them to participate in the process and letting them know about the housing element update. The city also emailed the Blue Mountain Terrace and Neighbor Works project lists as well, so those, all the people that were interested in those projects also received the direct email about the project. And a presentation was made to Winters Rotary, and during the preparation of the housing element, the survey deadline was extended, which increased the responses from about a hundred and ten to a hundred and ninety surveys. So we got pretty, pretty good feedback on, on the survey. The public review draft housing element was made available for the public to comment on in late May and, um, June twenty twenty-one, and that was provided also at a Planning Commission public workshop. So we presented the material to the Planning Commission, and the public was also invited to comment during the public workshop. So we did receive oral comments at the public workshop, as well as comments and writing during the review period. And concurrently with the public review, we also provided it to the state Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, for their review as required by state law. The Planning Commission did review and consider the housing element in August, um, on the twenty-fourth, and did unanimously recommend that the city council adopt the housing element. Next slide, please. So HCD reviewed the housing element, and they did issue a letter identifying findings associated with the housing element. And they did make a number of findings related to changes that needed to be made to the housing element to address the four requirements of state law. And a number of these were, were relatively straightforward, and then some of them did require significant additional analysis. So they identified that the housing element must be revised to address the fifth cycle elements cumulative effectiveness and meeting special housing needs. So that was added to the element. They also requested that additional information be provided related to the affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis, including addressing concentrated areas of affluence, integration and segregation patterns for specific classes, access to employment, and access to a number of opportunities. And then also identifying other relevant factors related to city's past actions to better inform future actions to encourage fair housing opportunities throughout the city. HCD also provided comments related to the city's inventory of land, and, uh, basically addressing the realistic capacity or the calculations that were performed to identify the number of units that could be accommodated on, on individual sites. Concern regarding the use of non-vacant sites and a request that the city better demonstrate how those sites could be developed or remove those from the inventory. A reminder that the site's inventory also needs to be submitted in electronic format. And then they also identified that measure A needed to be addressed in the analysis of governmental constraints. Next slide. Related to the housing programs, HCD identified that the housing element has to include specific and discrete timing for each program, that if there is a shortfall of sites after the inventory was updated to address the realistic capacity, that a program needs to be included to address that shortfall of sites and to ensure adequate zoning for a variety of housing types. The state also identified that specific actions need to be included to assist in the development of housing for farmworkers to address constraints related to measure A if necessary, and then also to promote opportunities to affirmatively further fair housing. And lastly, or two more items, they also identified that we needed to include quantified objectives for the conservation of housing units. And then also that throughout the process, the city must make a diligent effort to achieve public participation of all economic segments of the community. All of these changes were addressed in the revisions to the housing element. So a second housing element was prepared and submitted to each, or was prepared and distributed to the community as part of the Planning Commission's packet in August, so that went out to the community. Additional revisions were made following the Planning Commission meeting as well. So the housing element has to address how the city will accommodate its reasonable housing needs allocation. This is referred to as the RENA. The city received a large allocation, five hundred and fifty-two units. Of those, one hundred and twenty-five units are allocated to the very low income group, which is households earning up to fifty percent of the area median income, which is about forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty per year. Seventy-five units were allocated to low-income households, or households earning from fifty-one to eighty percent of the area median income, or forty-six thousand to seventy-four thousand per year. One hundred and four units were allocated to moderate income households. And then two hundred and forty-eight units were allocated to above moderate income households. And I'll note here that when you're identifying how the city will accommodate sites with the lower income groups, the very low and lower income groups are grouped together. So we look at the, that one hundred and twenty-five and seventy-five units as a combined two hundred units, when we're looking at how those units will be accommodated, and then we separately address the moderate and above moderate income groups. As discussed in the housing element and the inventory of sites, and the discussion of the cities available, um, or approved projects and accessory dwelling units that are anticipated to be developed in the city, the city has more than enough capacity to accommodate its moderate and above moderate income needs. However, there is a shortfall of units for the, or of sites to accommodate the lower income groups. So as discussed in chapter four of the background report, the city can accommodate about a hundred and thirty units of its two hundred unit RENA for the lower income units. So a program is included in the housing element to ensure that the city re-zones adequate sites to accommodate the full RENA for the lower income units, so an additional four point two five acres would be rezoned to accommodate the remaining RENA of seven units. And that rezone would occur at a zoning required, or a required density of seventeen and a half to twenty-two units per acre. And as you can see on the screen in front of you, there are a number of sites highlighted on the map that was included in the housing element, and we've added star to show that the five sites that are identified to potentially accommodate the reason to accommodate the lower income units. And so that's not something that would occur concurrently with this housing element, but the city would take that action as part of its implementation of the housing element. There are a number, I won't go over all of the programs in the housing element in detail, but there are a number of programs that encourage a greater variety of housing types in the city. And in particular, program two point eight encourages increased densities, particularly would require development in the upper quartile of densities in the R three and R four zones. So you would be ensuring that development in the R three and R four zones, of course, at the upper range of the allowed density, with exceptions made for lower income projects that would provide units for large households. Program two point eleven incentivizes the development of accessory dwelling units, and this would include a promotional campaign to encourage ADU development. And it also includes a component for the city to develop pre-approved ADU plans, which would simplify the application and approval process for your resident, to add an ADU to their, to their lot. Program two point seven, twenty-seven encourages housing diversification. And this program would incur, would require the city to regularly review the zoning ordinance to identify opportunities to increase housing variety in single-family zones. And this was developed specifically in response to some of the comments we've heard from the community regarding the need for additional housing types and greater variety in the single-family zones. And so this would look at potential changes to the zoning ordinance that could include allowing a specified percentage of units to be developed as multi-family units, allowing tri-puts and four-puts units on corner lots, or looking at other approaches to further diversify housing types in the single-family neighborhoods. Program two point twenty-nine would affirmatively further fair housing. And as I mentioned, the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement is a new requirement in state law. Past versions of the housing element did address fair housing, but not to the same level that the current housing elements require to do so. And so this is a new program that takes meaningful steps discrimination and to foster inclusive communities and neighborhoods that are free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on specific protective characteristics. And this program includes a number of steps the city will take. It's probably the longest, for one of the longest programs in the housing plan. It would ensure that the city provides information regarding renter and homebuyer assistance programs and resources. So residents understand, and people who are interested in moving to Winters understand the resources and programs that are available to them. When the city receives fair housing complaints, it identifies agencies and organizations that the city will refer the fair housing complaints to. It ensures that an annual report is prepared that identifies fair housing complaints, complaints and complaints, the outcomes from those complaints. And then also identifies if there are any geographic areas with concentrations of fair, of discrimination or fair housing claims to be, and identify any, any hotspots or areas of concern. If there are areas with higher level, levels of fair housing claims, then you would target outreach to those areas to ensure that the property owners and landlords and residents all understand the fair housing laws. This program also includes the cities working with regional agencies and organizations to develop additional city-specific data related to fair housing and related issues. This becomes a bit of an issue when we were preparing the housing element. A lot of the data that's collected at the census tract level is for an area much larger than the city. And so we have a lot of data that's generally reflective of Winters, but it's not necessarily reflective of individual neighborhoods and components within the city. So as part of this program, you would work to develop some additional city-specific data to better understand those fair housing issues and concerns. Program two point thirty-one was added to increase access to services and opportunities. So this would address areas in the city where you have lower place-based resources, so lower educational opportunities, employment opportunities, economic opportunities, and services opportunities. So this provides, um, economic development and mobility strategies to increase access to opportunities in those areas. Program two point thirty-three addresses community preservation, and this, um, requires the city to invest in under-resourced areas of the city. And so as you're developing your annual budgets, your capital and progress program, you would look at areas that are prioritized as under, under-resourced, and make sure that you're investing in those areas, as well as others areas of the city that are in need of investment. So there's a lot of information in the housing element regarding the city's requirements for development projects. But the housing element is not the only component of how the city reviews and approves development projects. So the city sets the stage for development. The city does not develop housing, but rather it provides the general plan, all of the elements of the general plan, that guide housing development and non-residential development as well. And in particular, when the city receives a development application, those applications are reviewed for consistency with the general plan, including the land use element, which establishes allowed land uses and maximum densities on development sites throughout the city, as well as being reviewed with the city zoning code, which implements the general plan. And the zoning code provides more detailed development and site planning standards, so it provides a greater level of specificity. Applications are also reviewed for compliance with other applicable plans and guidelines that the cities adopted. When the city receives housing applications, they're reviewed for consistency with the city's inclusionary housing requirement. So they're required to meet very low, low and moderate income requirements of the inclusionary housing ordinance. And then the city works with those developers to identify the type of housing that will be included in the variety of housing units included in individual development projects. So the housing element's not the only component, and when you're looking at the sites in the housing element, those reflect how the city accommodates the needs required by state law, but there are other sites throughout the city where development can occur as well. And with that, I would be happy to answer any comments or questions related to the housing element.
Okay, definitely a lot to take in. Is there any, uh, questions or concerns from council? Anybody? All right, we will go to, um, I believe this requires a public hearing, so we will start a public hearing at seven sixteen. And Shelley, can you check and see if we have anybody that would like to comment on the housing element?
Uh, Alyssa Meyer.
Okay, Alyssa, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Alyssa Meyer with Legal Services of Northern California, and I'm making comments tonight on behalf of the Sacramento Housing Alliance, a nonprofit organization in our region that advocates for safe, stable, accessible, and affordable homes. And I'm primarily commenting tonight to thank the city staff and consultants for making substantial revisions to the initial draft of the housing element. As you heard, the housing element is an incredibly important planning document because it identifies the city's housing conditions and needs, and establishes the goals, objectives, and policies that are the foundation of the city's housing strategy for the next eight years. We appreciate that the city considered our comments and addressed them by making revisions throughout the draft. We were especially pleased to see that the city added clear commitments and quantified objectives to the implementation programs and substantially, substantially revised many of the other programs. We specifically commend the city for adding program two point three-two to facilitate farmworker housing, and program two point three-three that you just heard about to direct investment in lower resource areas. The revised draft also contains a substantially amended robust analysis of fair housing impediments in section five. The city removed inappropriate sites from the sites inventory, but then could not identify adequate sites for lower income households. State law requires that the city create a program when this happens, which the city did. Um, sites to accommodate the shortfall, in this case seventy units, must be rezoned within three years. So what I'd like to do is really encourage the city to be aggressive and forward-thinking in rezoning, because the issue with identifying adequate sites for lower income households will not end with this housing element cycle. The city only has a very finite amount of land that is vacant or underutilized within the urban growth boundary. So rezoning with that constraint in mind will help the city prepare for seven years from now, when you hire a consultant, and the consultant has to locate that land. So if you are very aggressive with your rezoning, you won't be back here with another rezone program in the future. We look forward to working with the city during the implementation of the programs in the housing element, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alyssa. Shelley, do we have anybody else?
Uh, Kenneth Britton.
Yes, hi.
Welcome.
Hey, call me Ken, please. Um, great to be here. Thank you for taking my comment. Um, I'll try to be quick. Um, there's two, there's two crises facing California. As we know, the housing crisis is one, and the climate crisis is the other. They are, it turned out to be linked, and the same actions will, um, solve both of these or help to solve both of these urgent, uh, crises. And in particular, low-density suburban housing of the sort of California model is the enemy, both for, um, affordable housing and for climate, uh, reasons. The large lots, the large houses are energy hogs, water hogs, and they actually frankly have no soul. The 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 I know these neighborhoods well. I grew up in Southern California, and it's not what winters is. So a more diverse housing supply with mixture of smaller and larger houses. Will solve a lot of problems, will reduce our energy carbon footprint, will produce a more vibrant community. And will allow the the many things that make winters great to continue. And I think the city is being less ambitious, as many people have commented, than it needs to be with this particular housing element. And I I appreciate the efforts that have been done to take into account these comments, but I think. There is more that could be done. In particular, I would like recognition of the fact. That many cities can actually impose mandates for housing density. You don't have to just work with developers and encourage developers to do it. And you don't have to just provide a zoning substrate. The city can actually put in its housing element. Mandates that say we want a certain percentage of houses at a certain density. And this, I think, is the way you can make it happen for the entire next eight-year cycle for all further developments. To meet the goals that that both the climate and the housing crisis should be imposing because of the urgency of these problems. So I would encourage the city to not approve it as it stands, send it back and put mandates into it. For substantial fractions above state requirements of both low and very low, very low, low and moderate income housing. That young families and all sorts of people can afford and make winters more vibrant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kenneth. Shelley, any other commenters?
Kate Lattish.
Okay, welcome, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor Cowan. Kate Lattish, four hundred Morgan Street, number twenty one, and I. I would also like to start with with thanking staff for for their work on this and in incorporating the comments made either submitted in written form. Or made at previous meetings such as the Planning Commission meeting in the draft that went to city council and highlighting those, so it's it's easy to follow along. I'd like to start with a topic that you've heard me speak about before, and that's universal design. So often when projects go to the Planning Commission or to city council, I bring up the importance of livability and visitability that people. Need to be able to live in a home or apartment or whatever mode of housing in winters. No matter their mobility situation, and that it's also good to be able to visit other people here too. And so I'd like to start by thanking staff for taking in my comment about increasing the percentage. Of 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 houses that are homes that we would like to see as universal design and bringing it from five to ten percent. And that is in program two point two four. And but I I see this as as a good first step. But that that I really strongly encourage winters to increase this more. Some of the issues that were brought up. In the survey were the need to have to have housing stock that allows people to age in place and for people. With a variety of 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 different ways that we experience life, be able to live in winters. And a lot of of housing that comes through just isn't accessible for for a lot of people. And that I don't quite understand how how we ensure that actually the five or ten percent would be met. I I know in the housing element, it says it's. If required by federal or state regulations applicable to a certain project. But I I would like us to to be more more proactive about incorporating universal design, and I think the housing element is a great opportunity for that. Let's see, I also appreciate that the staff took on board comments about program two point two seven, the housing diversification program. There's a statewide and federal move towards a kind of away actually from single-family zoning and towards. A more diverse neighborhoods in terms of the housing stock that that is there. And so I would encourage the the city to. To lean into that direction. It is demonstrated as a way of helping to solve the housing crisis. And so I think that that would help us meet the RIN numbers, which is part of what we're trying to do with the housing element. And in terms of there's been discussions, certainly there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting with a lot of comments. About the move away from single-family zoning or what's also called exclusionary zoning. And I realize that the housing element isn't. It 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 is not the one place that we review our zoning code. But that it has a roadmap and it's an aspirational document and and can kind of has a has a map for how we could get there. And I believe that there's a date given of December of twenty twenty two. By which the city would have a discussion about the zoning code, and I would encourage. The request the city council to direct staff to bump that date up a little closer. I would like us to have that discussion before other big projects come come to the city for discussion so that we can. Make sure that that we have zoning that works for us and that we don't miss any any opportunities just because because of the timing of when we're having the discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Shelley, next?
I Gar House.
Hi, everyone, and thanks for taking my. Comment. I would like to say that I I find great merit in what both. Ken and Kate have been saying. They're both very wise people and have been around. I know them. And I think that what they're espousing and proposing. Is of great value, and it could be of great value to the city of winters because they're. And I think we should explore this because they're talking about even beyond just solving the housing problems, but actually. Enhancing the cultural and social aspects of the of winters, which is which would be an outstanding move. And I think that quite brilliant. Solving many problems with sort of like with one. Act or several acts, I guess you might say. So. I applaud them, and also thank you, Beth, for a fine presentation, and and it's nice to see you, Alyssa, say what you said about the. Expanding the 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 housing element, and I would I would like to just ask a question sort of at the end of what. If for open it to whoever, what do you see as the role of these ADUs in this process of. Of improving or the housing in the housing crisis? Anybody can answer that who wishes to.
Anybody like to comment on that from staff?
Well, I can't I can tell you, Mayor, that I'm working with an outside consultant. Who has provided ready's ready-to-go plans to other cities for a fee. We actually have a grant from the state to help us pay for that, in fact, pay for all of it. And I'm hoping to have that resolved here shortly so that we can move ahead. It will make it either. So the plans are free, depending on what we pay, or at most someone would have to pay a thousand dollars. And that's considerably less than what you'd have to pay to get an architect or even a designer. To give you a construction set of plans that are ready for development, and there'll be three different models. We're also looking to. Offer the public three different choices with different siding and and finishes. So that can tell you that's at least what we're doing at at the planning level right now.
Hey, thank you, Dave. Shelley, do we have any other commenters?
I see no other hands.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing at seven twenty nine. And we'll go back to council for comments or concerns. Council member Lauren.
Thank you very much for taking my comment. I wanted to thank staff and Alyssa Meyer, Beth Thompson, Dan McGuire, Lisa Baker, all the people that have really. Put a lot of work into this. My first comment is just kind of looking for clarification on the visibility and livability. Seems to me that in the staff report on, I think it's page fifty nine, sixty-nine percent of households own their own homes. Fifty-three percent of heads of households are headed by people fifty-five and older. Ten percent of our community is sixty-five and older. It seems like we are an aging in place kind of community. You know, people come here, they stay here. We know that we've had people here for families here for over a hundred years. Bill Biassi is probably the only member on council that's been here that long, but. His family. But it seems to me with that background that visibility and livability are two qualities that would. Work against patterns of segregation, would work to make communities more welcoming and integrated. And whether or not the state requires it, it just seems to me that it would be an important element to capture and. And write into our element. Because it matches our values. And I I definitely want to comment on that, and then my second question just has to do with winter. How soon can we look at zoning for the seventy seventy, the seventy units? We have three years, but it seems that. It would be great to address that earlier and more aggressively with an eye to the future. Thank you. Those are my two kind of questions, comments.
Well, if I can comment on the on the second comment, I would certainly underline to council that. The housing element update is a is a very necessary step, but it's not a standalone. This document should form the framework for ongoing discussions by council. As to the type of housing that they'd like to see develop in in winters and some of the other aspects that have been brought up tonight. So. Again. It kept it, for example, with the 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 three-year deadline on the discussion, that's a that's a it must happen. By that, there's nothing to preclude with the adoption of the housing element tonight. For for council requesting that that be brought forward at an earlier date. So. If if that is the will of the council, council can certainly give that direction to staff. But but it I don't know that it necessarily requires a change in the in the housing element for that to be the outcome.
Thank you so very much, Dan. That was very clear.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council comment? Council member new?
I have a question and probably for Dan, but my question is if we approve the. This motion tonight, would that preclude us from being able to mandate things in the near future when we have to wait eight years? I I heard heard clearly what. What Ken Britton was saying, and I hear what Kate was saying. I think those things should. I I wouldn't want to mandate. Too far in into the future, but I think that we should take a very serious look. At being aggressive in this, and I would like to see this approved this evening. But I want to know whether or not if we approve it, it precludes us from. Making small changes in the process.
In my mind, council member knew it does not, but I'll also ask Assistant City Attorney Joanna to weigh in. I think that that it absolutely can move forward with various initiatives that aren't laid out. Specifically in the housing element, and with that, I'll I'll turn it over to City Attorney Jen.
Thank you, Dan, and no, it wouldn't preclude you from taking other actions in order to impose mandates. Also, I'd like to just note that. The deadline for council to approve this is one hundred and twenty days after May fifteenth. In order to stay on the four-year cycle, otherwise, sorry, in order to stay on the eight-year cycle to approve the housing element. Otherwise, council will have to adopt another housing element in four years. And that one hundred and twenty-day deadline will be this Sunday, September twelfth, and so I just wanted you to be aware of that.
I I thank you, and I was aware of that deadline, and that's that's why I raised the question, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Her mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just would like to also say thank you to Beth Thompson and Genovale. For all their work putting this report together, as well as all our city city staff members who've put a lot of time and effort into it. Dan McGuire. Came back and after retirement, he helped us finish this out, and thank you, Dan. I know a lot of people at the city, city manager as well, have put a lot of time and effort into this. This is a very important document. For our future, it is, you know, we're looking at how how we're going to. Make it possible to have sites available for affordable housing and just for all types of housing in our city in the next eight years. Hopefully. This will, if gets approved tonight, and then we'll get, you know, moved on to the state and approved for the next eight years, but. I think to council member news comment, I think that doesn't preclude us from. Taking any other, if we want to take more action and specific action on our own. That there's nothing holding us back from doing that, so it's definitely something I do, I think we can do. I know I appreciate that there's five sites that were identified in this for potential rezoning. For higher density, for low income, very low income. And I know there's a project that's actually got a site that looks very specific that might address these needs in the near future if it moves forward, so. I appreciate that, and I know we've done work in the past as a city to. To encourage more duplexes on some of the corner lots in the development so that we have more. Moderate housing mixed in with the new developments that we're putting in, and we've scattered them around town. Our our affordable housing units are scattered quite a bit around town, so. I think we've done a lot, and this this report outlines a lot of opportunities for us to make changes in the future. I also appreciate Kate's comment on the the visitability part of it, and I like that we've moved it up to at least ten percent. Of what's built should be visitable or accessible, so I appreciate that being in there, and I would like to. That to be something that we discuss in the future, whether we as a city want to raise that bar even higher, because as she said, we're all. We're all getting older. There's a lot of us in the baby boomer community who would like to stay in our houses and to make them. Livable as we have more and more challenges getting around. I think the more we build into new homes as we go along, the better it will be. So I appreciate that. And the question on the ADUs and how they fit into the affordable housing part of it. You know, the with the plans that we're trying to make available for people. That will help that it helps to lower the cost of building these ADUs. They're on. Someone's property that's already there, so they can add another unit, which means there's not the extra land cost on there. So if someone wants to add that ADU. By design, they're going to be a smaller unit and but they will be less cost than developing it and will make them more affordable, so. I think that will help us to address. I'm not sure how many of those we built. We don't have a mechanism for saying. You know, how many have to be built, but those those opportunities are there for the future for us to do that if people desire to do that, so. Other than that, I think that's all the comments I have on this. I would. Strongly urge us to move forward with this so that we could get it approved tonight and get an eight-year housing element approved rather than having to do this again in four years, which means hiring a consultant probably again in about three years to. To redo this whole process again, so I would strongly like to see us move forward tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council member Anderson, any thoughts?
Yeah, the. Mayor, I. I would like to see. Some duplexes mix it and mixed in. Developers can afford it. I'm not sure they can. Cost of building would be. A lot compared to. Building a mall. Three or four on the corner. Two or three on another corner, that that kind of approach is much more. Feasible. You can move forward to. Change things. As. As we have heard. I think we have to keep costs in mind somehow. I think we have to keep costs in mind somehow. What we're doing and what people can afford.
Hey, thank you. Well, I, I also want to thank all the staff that's worked on this. I know it's been. You know, quite the task. It, it always is. This is always a huge part of. You know, our planning process and, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. And I, I do agree that with the mayor pro tem that. You know, I'm, I'm confident if we, if we want to make some changes or mandates or any other things that were suggested, we can certainly do that in the future, as the attorney alluded to. I, I wish that. We would have got more response to the survey than we did, but I know there was a ton of effort put into. Advertising and, and getting the word out to encourage people. I mean, they went to different organizations like the Rotary and stuff, and. There was a lot of effort put into getting people to fill out these surveys and, and it's, it's kind of disappointing that. You know, there, there wasn't more participation in that, because, you know, all those comments make a difference and help shape things. So. You know, in, you know, reading through that, that while I'm in the process of reading it. Not having so many was a good thing, but in reality, the more of it we would have seen, the better. But I, I do have a question for all that worked on this. And I'd just like your opinions on this. There's two bills that have been passed by the Senate. And, and the House, and they're waiting for the governor's signature. They're SB nine and SB ten. And they both have implications on. Our ability to dictate zoning, how many houses go on a lot, all those kinds of things. Do any of you, Beth, Joanne, and Dan, anybody have any thoughts or concerns about if those two bills get signed, how they might? Effect our housing element and our ability to control how things are done within the city?
I hear, I see Joanna getting ready to jump in.
Well, I would, I would want to take a look in at, at the current version. That was enrolled and sent to the governor and then report back on that.
Okay, I would like it if, if you could do that in the near future, because I think those. Those two bills could have a huge implication on what we're able to do and how we're able to do it.
We can, we can provide a next, at the next council meeting, we can provide a recap and bench it as an information item.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I would like to just make, make a comment, but I wanted to say that the League of California Cities is opposed to both of those bills and are actively soliciting. City council members' comments. And if you haven't received those emails, I can forward them to you. But. I am so ready to make a motion, but I wanted to make one more comment. Beth Thompson, I just wanted to thank you for the explicit explanation of the affirmatively furthering fair housing. I think it really spelled out that concentrated areas of affluence do not benefit a city. And that, that we need to observe the integration and segregation patterns. And that we're definitely addressing it in this housing element. And I, I think that's good for our city and good for our future. So I just wanted to thank you for spelling that out. In the slide. I didn't know how to word it, but you sure certainly did. So thank you. Are we ready for a motion, Wade?
Sure.
Oh, Bill has his hand up.
Mayor pro tem.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment, something that was brought up earlier in regards to measure A. And how this housing element affects measure A. You know, measure A deals with things as far as. Annexation and our urban growth limits. So I believe based on this housing element, we've identified. Adequate sites to provide affordable housing within our current city limits. So. Most of the things in measure A, from my understanding, and maybe Beth could clarify this. That we don't need to specifically address the areas that measure A covers. Because we have enough sites within our city limits. Is that correct?
Correct. You have enough capacity once you have implemented your recent program.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And also to follow up on Jesse's comment. I did read that the League of California Cities are opposed to both SB nine and SB ten. And I think for, for really good reason, because if, if those two bills are signed, as, as I read them recently. We won't have any, say, overzoning anymore. It'll be a state, a state-controlled thing. And, and I don't think any of us want to see the state of California telling. Any city, let alone ours, what we can and can't build and how many. And so I, I look forward to hearing back from, from our city attorney on, on where these things ended up. And hopefully neither one of them gets signed. So with that, Jesse.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Well, let me start, that we received the staff report on the twenty twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-nine housing element update. That we have held the public hearing, that we approved the notice of exemption. And that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one, adopting the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-nine housing element update tonight.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion by council member Lauren and a second by council member New to adopt the housing element. Shelley, roll call vote, please.
Council member Anderson.
Yes.
Council member Lauren.
Yes.
Council member New.
Yes.
Mayor pro tem Biase.
Yes.
Mayor Cowan.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for all your work on this item. All right, we're going to move on to. Discussion item nine, which is an introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh three. Repeating and recasting Title fifteen of the Winters Benett's Code. And adopting the twenty nineteen Building Standards Code and the twenty nineteen Fire Codes and other uniform codes. All right. And I think we have our new building official with us tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, yes, we do. And if you don't mind, I'll introduce the item and then introduce our new contract chief building official, Tom Davis. So the item before you tonight is introducing and waiving the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh three. And should council so desire, set a public hearing date for the adoption of the codes for October fifth, twenty twenty-one. And so this is kind of a dooferr. We'll have our new CBO, Tom Davis, introduce this item and discuss the changes in the building code, followed by. Chief Lopez related to the fire code. But I am very excited to introduce to you all and to the community, Tom Davis. He is formerly the chief building official for Yellow County. He's been with us as a contract building official for, I guess, coming up on two months. Tom, is that correct? We're very excited to have him on board. He has moved right in very comfortably downstairs. Getting to know many people, and he's already known many of the folks already in the community, given his years with Yellow County. So. With that, I'm happy to recognize Tom Davis and welcome him officially to, to the city staff and to the community. So, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, City Manager Prepa, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's nice to kind of see everybody in the same place. I know I met a few of you in the hallways, but it's nice to see everybody together. Yeah, tonight, we're recommending that we update the codes to the twenty nineteen California Building Codes. The update to reflect the. Excuse me. Traditionally, this was done every three years. The city winner is a little bit late, getting caught up with the twenty nineteen. But we're going to do that now. And then next year, we're going to be looking at. Up, updating it to the twenty twenty-two. The benefits of doing this is to have the ability to cite violations of the building code. As violations of the most benuncible code. So it'll give us a little more. Power to enforce the new codes, which have drastically changed since the last time the codes were updated. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for our new building official? No. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Tom. Welcome to Winters. We're glad to have you. And I know this is typically a pretty routine thing at the. First of January of the year, following the, the code cycle, this should have been, you know, basically. Per the state, starting January one, twenty twenty. And like you said, we're a little, little behind, unfortunately. So. All of those out there in the building world, we've been used to this and, and been. Basically following the twenty nineteen code all along anyway. So. Good to get caught up. And with that, we'll, we'll move on to, and let the fire chief speak to the twenty nineteen fire code. As well, before we go to the public comment. Chief Lopez.
Mayor, council, thank you. Like Tom mentioned, about every three years, our codes, fire codes are typically updated. And we're looking to update ours to the two thousand nineteen fire code. Just a little background, the last update that our fire code was updated from was back in two thousand and seven. And that was probably under Chief Dozier at that time. So it's been a little while since our fire codes have been updated. And really, the, the importance of this is really, as you talked about earlier, building a resilient communities from the prevention side. We look at that as. Is making sure our homes, businesses are safe with fire protection systems that are adequate. Alarm systems and, and really just ensuring we have a safe community. So the fire codes really address those things. And help guide the principles for construction in that and various developments. With that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Is there any council questions or comments before we go to public comment? Seeing none. Shelley, do we have any public comment regarding the building codes?
Assistant City Attorney Jen has her hand raised.
Okay, Joanne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you had mentioned, Title twenty-four of the building codes. Do currently apply. The two thousand and nineteen version does apply as a matter of law. So what is occurring here is that. Our building official and our fire chief have reviewed the two thousand and nineteen building codes and the fire codes. And made express findings to make local amendments to those state codes. And so you'll see that reflected. In the documents before you tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions or comments?
I see no other hands, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will entertain a motion.
I'll move this item. I'm a, I move that we introduced and waived the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh three, repealing and recasting. Title fifteen of the Winters Municipal Code and adopting by reference the twenty nineteen Building Standards Code. The twenty nineteen fire code and other uniform codes, together with local amendments and. Set a public hearing date on the adoption of the codes for October fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by council member New and a second by council member Lauren. Shelley, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, council member Anderson.
Hi.
Council member Lauren.
Hi.
Council member New.
Hi.
Mayor pro tem Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. And welcome again, Tom. Thank you, Chief Lopez. All right. Now we're going to move on to the city manager's report. Kathleen.
Yes, thank you very much. So I do not have an update for tonight, but I did want to recognize Mr. Dan McGuire, because I believe this will be his last city council meeting before he departs. And goes across the, the country and across the pond to his new home in Italy. He's not looking very excited. But I did want to say a thank you to Dan for helping us these last few months and for contributing more of his retirement time. Supporting the community of Winters and all of us here at City Hall. And I certainly appreciate his help. We've enjoyed his company in the hallways. We did feed him, and we did allow him to wear shorts to work, which is why he came back. But this is his last official meeting before he heads off on the fourteenth to Italy. So I did want to thank him. Publicly and give others an opportunity to thank him as well. So.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks a lot, Dan. See you in Italy.
Ciao, ciao.
We'll adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-six. And anybody that needs to take a vacation to Italy. Dan will give you his address for a free place to stay. Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Thank you. Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.